When you are mayor?
Well, call the meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Still here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
Councilmember Floralee Knight?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you, Diane. Number three, discussion flood control project IGA's, Norm.
Yes, Mayor, the council action had for your consideration this evening is an intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai County Flood Control District. They missed, this may look a little familiar to council. I come this time every year. These are projects that we are contemplating building and what we need to do in order to capture flood control funding. Keep in mind, Yavapai County collects a levy for flood control projects. Town can make application of those particular projects. And it's important to note that that levy, this year it's in an amount of $500,000. And that levy does have to be used for stormwater management projects. So, you've probably seen my presentations in Public Works. We have lots of funding buckets. Well, this one is for stormwater management. So, can't patch potholes or anything. The nice thing is, we collect a levy through property tax and we build stormwater management projects. So, we come to council every time this year. What I'd like to do, Mayor, is in addition to the intergovernmental agreement for your consideration, just give you some highlights of some of the projects that Public Works will be bringing to you in the coming months for construction. Just hit the highlights. The one you have in front of you is the Viewpoint Flood Plane Channel Project. This one may look familiar. We actually built Phase One with last year's money, last budget year. So, this is actually Phase Two we're proposing. This year's project is in the neighborhood of $300,000. It's the middle section. If you see the exhibit in front of you, it's actually building mostly channel this year. So, we're getting a lot more, just due to the nature of the construction, a lot of dirt channel moving. So, we'll use some of the funding this year to continue that project. That is a Phase Two project. Council may recall, last year, last monsoon season, a year ago, we had quite a storm in that particular basin and we didn't get the improvements done until December. So, council may recall that we had about two hours where residents couldn't get home, but this is the basin. Well, we put that first phase into place. Well, guess what? This year, Mother Nature didn't treat us the same and we didn't have any problems there, which is good news. But, as we continue to build this flood plane channel out, this will be coming to you in the next month for your consideration for project awards. So, Phase Two of the design, and as you can see, Phase Three actually will be next year's project. We contemplate funding. So, reason we're doing it in phases, obviously, the way you build these projects in phases and pay-as-you-go type on the levy. So, we don't borrow any money. So, we build these channels in phases. And of course, the, in this budget year this year, the Spouse Viewpoint Intersection has quite a bit of stormwater management in it. So, we are spending quite a bit of money on this corridor, in addition to roadway improvements. Different funding source, but all part of the big plan this engineer's been putting together. That's one of the bigger projects. The second project that we're really looking forward to is a partnership with Yavapai County of the Sunset Lane Widening. This is a multi-year project for design, in addition to construction, even about three years out. So, this is a very large project. And what we're proposing with flood control dollars is to start the design. Part of the design effort, a contribution will be flood control dollars to put what we contemplate is a large underground pipe that will help with the drainage improvements as part of the Sunset Lane Widening. So, council may be aware, as part of that significant roadway widening, from the current two lanes, the three lanes, we'll have a large storm drain, manage stormwater better in addition to the street and sidewalk improvements. So, contribution about $100,000 would be towards the storm drain design. Good use of flood control dollars to help with the flood, stormwater management in the Castle Canyon Mesa and the Lynx Creek Estates area. So, $100,000 going to that. And the other project that we're looking at too is, council may be aware, we've gotten our flood plane maps updated in the last year. Part of the funding, if there's any particular small projects and implementation of the maps could require a little more design, or we don't particularly know, but funding can go towards that particular endeavor over this next year. So, we're on a timeline this next year to implement our new flood plane map. So, some funding could go to that in order to help implement that mapping. So, that's the $500,000 we've got plans for. We'd like to recognize Supervisor Jack Smith. He wasn't able to make it tonight, I understand. He got stuck in Phoenix. But, keep in mind, very engaged in making sure that these stormwater management projects come to fruition and very, very good support from Supervisor Smith to help support the funding for these projects and his high recommendation. And as I see, multi-year projects to make sure that we stay on this momentum to build the projects in the end. So, do want to thank him for that particular support. That's what we've got coming. We'll take these projects to you over the coming months in this current budget year. But, it's staff's recommendation, we approve the intergovernmental agreement, which is the vehicle, so to speak, to get the funding for these projects.
Question, Mary?
You know, you mentioned earlier about it was, you know, this comes from property tax. And I just want to make it really clear that it's Yavapai County that the property tax is in, it isn't Prescott Valley on a property tax. So, that's all I wanted to make sure, because Prescott Valley doesn't have a property tax. And we do appreciate Supervisor Smith and the work that we get done with the county in these areas for our town. So, thank you, Norm, for your work with county supervisors.
Any other comments, questions? Laura?
Well, those of us who've lived here a long time, we know how desperately this is needed. Unfortunately, it isn't the only one. So, we'll have more projects that we'll be needing to give attention to. But, the residents that live in this area are probably going to turn handsprings. They're going to be so happy because we've been having some unusual storms, so.
Yeah, because when I comment to that, we've made a lot of headway in the last 10 years I've been here, but certainly, this is one of our most important priorities. So, we do have an engineering study that this is one of our next priorities and we'll see better stormwater management in this area.
Other questions?
Mayor, I just wanted to add too. We talked about the projects. This will be on for approval for next week if we can bring it back. So, okay to put on the consent, or if you'd like to talk about it again?
Yes, but one question real quickly, and I'm sure the council will agree. And I notice on Viewpoint, those ditches are getting pretty deep. Is there anything being done to, on preventing that from eroding far?
We're about to on Viewpoint, Mayor. The finished construction plan?
Yeah.
Right, we're actually going to dig a bigger ditch in order to handle the capacity of that stormwater basin. But, yes, those ditches will, as part of the ultimate design and the widening of the road, those ditches won't be needed anymore. Very similar when we do these big stormwater management projects. To your point, not this current year, but on the horizon, when we get the full improvement in place, some of those particular large ditches can go away. And this is a significant sized ditch. It's about five feet deep and 20 feet wide, I believe, I recall the design right. But, it's a good comment, yes.
I would just say, the control flood control you did on Tonopah, no one got flooded this year. And that design works beautifully. So, I know, not only does it work and it's highly functional, it looks good.
Thank you for that. Engineers did their job there. It's good to hear.
Any other?
And the contractors.
Any other comments, questions? Anything else, Norm?
No, that'd be it, Mayor.
I think council will be able to have this on the...
Absolutely.
They say absolutely, so put her...
Very good. Put on a KFC next week. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we go on to number four, discussion, software agreement with OpenGov Incorporated. Mr. Calpe, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Well, tonight, I'm not going to talk about numbers or financial reports to you. So, that's one thing, you know. Larry let me off last month about doing my 51-page year-end overview, which I was very disappointed, but, so tonight...
Yeah, we were disappointed too, Bill.
I bet you were. I bet you were. The item before you tonight is discuss an agreement with a software company called OpenGov Inc. And by the name, you can kind of implies that the primary purpose of this software is to provide more information, readily available information, to the citizens. But, in addition to that, it's also supposed to be a tool that not only staff, but also council can utilize. So, tonight, I'm going to kind of give you like a brief overview. The presentation was actually sent to me, probably one of their sales reps. So, kind of bear with me as I go through some of the screens. One of the other things I did want to point out is that most of the information that we have is available on our town website. Most of the time, the comments or some of the complaints that I receive is that someone doesn't want to go through a 550-page budget book to try to find a number or find some information. So, what this software will provide us with is the tools to kind of decide, the person can actually decide what they want to select. And, you know, assuming everything will be working fine, they'll be able to get it basically at the click of the button. So, that's what the whole purpose of this software is. And I'll give you a couple of screens. And at the very end, I'm going to go to a city that's actually currently utilizing OpenGov and show you some of the things that they provide to their citizens. OpenGov, again, it's a web-based tool that basically they're housing. So, it's stored at their facility. So, we don't, at this point, we don't probably need any hardware. All we need to do is give them a connection to our system. Right now, we're going to focus primarily on budgeting and financial information. So, they're going to need access to our accounting system, which is HTE. We currently have 14 years' worth of data. And according to the system, or to my, the sales rep, if we want 14 years' worth of information, we can do it. It makes, may make it a little bit slower to try to gather information, but it's doable. So, we probably won't go that far. We'll probably do two, three, four years and see how that works first. As you can see, it provides financial and non-financial. Again, we're going to focus financial first, but the non-financial part, and I got a slide here that shows a little bit, but you can actually go into other systems that we have available in our, in the town. So, if you want permitting, we can actually access the permitting system and provide people with information that, you know, that system has available. It's supposed to be used both internally and externally, as I said. And the other part is, really one of the benefits is to increase transparency. And with that, hopefully, that everyone can then see what we have available in our accounting system and it'll be basically available at that point in time. So, like, I think we're going to try to bring the information over either daily or weekly. So, at that point, everyone would know where we were at the end of a week or at the end of the previous day. This is just a little bit of information about, you know, how many customers they currently have. Right now, it says 1,000-plus. I went online today. There actually are over 1,200 right now. They're in 46 states. They're at $125 billion worth of basically expenditures from other cities that they kind of analyze. You can see some of the list here. They have states, they have counties, school districts, and then they also have cities. So, I'm going to be going to the city of Fort Lauderdale, kind of look at their budget real briefly at the very end. This one right here, it shows the various individuals that this is supposed to be to help. You know, it says the finance team, my group. I think we're going to get a lot of benefit out of this. It has a lot of very strong inquiries, a lot of filtering you can do. It also says it's going to improve budget process. I think our budget process is pretty good. If nothing else, it's going to supplement. And it's going to provide more budget, budgetary information to the council and to citizens, basically as we go through the budget process if we want. Says Town Manager, Department Heads. Not quite sure Larry's going to use it, but I'm probably going to give it to Ryan. So, you know, I just left that there. If he uses it, that will be very impressive on my part, but... And then Department Heads. And I think that really the key here is going to be some of the admins, the assistants. They're going to be able to provide and gather information for their department heads a lot quicker than they had in the past. Instead of calling us all the time or trying to generate a report on HTE, they'll be able to access this information almost immediately. Our local officials yourself will show you as we go through the process, some of the different information that will actually be available for your review. And then, of course, the public. Annual reports. This right here just kind of shows through the different, the process. So, what we would do is that normally, right now, we provide, we get hard copies. Everything is printed on a hard copy. So, going forward, especially for the department heads, they can actually see the, basically where we are now and where we're going through the budget process. Instead of actually printing out reports all the time, we will give them the information on a regular basis. Now, as you can see here, in this case, the budget goes up. In our case, typically, department heads start high and then we go down from there. So, hopefully, when you would see ours, you'd see the trend kind of going down the other way. But, what the other benefit to this is, it provides actual information over the previous years. So, you can kind of see a trend line as to where you're going and, you know, if you're going up, you know, why are you going up? If you're going down, why are you going down? So, it kind of helps you kind of plan for your budget process. Current year financials. This one right here, you can see it's through October. So, I think this company or this city is probably on a calendar year-end, because hopefully, in the first quarter of a fiscal year, you don't spend two-thirds of your money already by the, by the looks of it. But, you can actually just see how, you know, and it compares through October this year through the two previous years, through October. So, it gives you that, you know, nine months' worth of information and it compares it to the previous year to see if you're above or behind from the previous years. So, and then it's a little legend on the left or on the right-hand side there. Again, one of the powerful features of this is if you don't, if you want to see it by department, all you do is you change the filter and you can change it to department and it just automatically recalculates the information and provides that new information to you. So, it's very, very powerful. This one right here, they call a checkbook. And it's, and it provides basically all of the transactions that occur within a certain time period, by fund, by townwide, whatever. So, there's going to be some little bit of training on this part and there's going to be a little bit of learning curve here, because there are, I don't know, there's numerous filters that you have to go through and make selections in order to make sure you get the right information. So, but, this information is also readily available to citizens. So, if they want to see something that's being spent in HERF, they can click on HERF and they can actually see the money that's being spent. Whatever is being recorded in our HTE accounting system would appear on this system. So, it's, again, it's very useful information, but again, it's, we have to be careful as to making sure all the filters are selected correctly. And a few years ago, we had a, there was some talk in the legislation about making all towns and cities, you know, provide a list of any transaction over a certain dollar amount, $5,000 is what was stated, revenues or expenditures. Right now, we kind of backed off on that and basically, we put our town CAFER, kind of satisfies that right now. But, this right here would take care of that problem. So, you could, you could set the threshold for any dollar amount you want and then it would just come up with that information. So, again, it's a very nice and useful tool. It'll also have balance sheets. Now, this one does shows assets and basically liabilities and fund balance. And one of the things I'll show you, well, I won't show you on balance sheet, but on this one, if you click on assets, then it's going to also then break that down into further. It'll show you what your cash balances are, what your receivables, what your payables. And if you click on the cash, then it'll break it down into what your investments are. So, there is many drill-down layers on this software that's available that, you know, will provide you pretty much as much information that I could provide you if you walk in my office and I want to see a balance sheet. I'll print off a balance sheet and hand it to you. This is the same type of stuff. The explanations may not be, be as good from there as coming from me, but the numbers are available anyway. This one right here is the budget, budgeting. And what it says is the different levels or the iterations. In our budget process, most time you don't see it, but we have five different levels through our budget process. So, what this actually would provide is the opportunity for you to see where we are on each of those levels. So, I don't know how helpful that would be, but again, you know, at some point, once we get it set up, you can actually then follow through, okay, here's department input and here's, you know, town manager's review and here's a review with salaries and benefits and stuff like that. So, we have all those different levels that we currently go through. And the way this is currently set up, if you wanted to see each of those levels, we could try to provide that for you and for you to look at. And then one of the other ones, again, I don't know how easy or how difficult it's going to be to gather some of this information, but non, or there's non-financial or performance, other performance data that's available, long-term financial projections. I do a five-year projection all the time for council. You know, I don't know how easy it's going to be to convert our Excel, my Excel spreadsheet into some type of performance measures that council might want to look at. Sales tax by categories. We do that every month. We could try to provide that information on a monthly basis on OpenGov, on the system. And here's some of the other, water usage, building permits. Building permits is probably going to be fairly easy to get to because they have their own system and all that information is stored. So, we can probably access that information relatively easy. But, again, that's going to probably be down the road a little bit. And again, the one of the, the main, I guess, the purpose, going back and stressing the purpose is basically transparency. That's one of our main goals. We hope that, you know, it does inspire some trust. There's questions as to, you know, information, if it's, how it's being provided and presented. Basically, this right here, we'll pull it right from our system. There's, there's nothing to change. There's nothing, there's, it's entries in and basically it'll be displayed. Makes our budgeting more transparent. Again, we can go through various budget process and various levels and we can put that out on the town website, ask for input, inquiries, whatever we want. And then just the sharing of financial information. So, with that, with that, I'd like to go and hopefully, this will work.
Mayor, you got a question?
Now, right now, what, what type of availability on our website do we have for people to go on and look on there?
Right now, it's just hard copies.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, like, right now, our last budget that was approved, we have, there's actually two copies of our budget book out there. We have the detailed one and then we have the condensed version. Both of those are out there. The detailed one is like 550 pages or something like that. And then we have bookmarks. So, if you want to look at general fund, if you want to look at, you know, police department, you can click Police Department and it'll take you to that section, but it won't give you any more information than that. If you want to know what, you know, the salaries are for the police department, it's very difficult to really calculate. We have salaries and benefits combined, but we just don't talk about salaries in and of itself, where this system would actually do that for you.
Bill, I think she was actually focusing on management services.
That's it, hey.
Any other questions, Mary?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Laura?
I do. In the OpenGov Agreement section on page two, second section, Restrictions and Responsibilities, Paragraph Three, it talks about us being responsible for any other equipment and other services. So, I'm assuming that would be in addition to the costs as listed. What, what would those be, Bill? Do you know?
Well, right now, right, the only one that they're talking about right now is that they, they'll need a connection to our system. So, they're going to need a port. Last I talked to him, he didn't believe that we would need our separate server, because the information is just going to be gathering what we currently have from our different servers from our systems. So, right now, the only thing that he had implied that we probably need is a direct link into our accounting system at this point.
Okay, so there would be additional costs to the cost listed here?
Well, I talked to Casey about that today and he says basically that we have plenty of ports, we have plenty of info, we have plenty of access to allow this system to come in without no cost to us at this point.
That's where I was hoping we'd end up.
Okay. Marty?
Yeah, two questions. First of all, how long will it take for the full transition from what we have now to having this transparent system? Also, we will still have a backup accounting system that's in place and those numbers will just be moved into the OpenGov system for people to be able to see online, right?
Well, this will be, right now, we have our accounting system where all of the information is entered. So, that will never go away. That will be there forever. It's a, a new accounting system is going to be about $1 million to purchase. So, that system will be there probably for a long time. So, what this system does though is it just takes that information from that accounting system. So, my staff will be entering information on a daily basis like they always do. That information then, at the end of a day or at the end of a week, will be uploaded into OpenGov for someone to look at if they wish.
Okay, but there were some items that you were saying that are going to be available later on. So, the full transition so that everything that you submit on your accounting system will be available online. About how long do you think that'll take? One year, two years, three years?
Right now, we're hoping that it's going to be 30 to 60 days. From signature, when it's approved, I'll start working. They're very eager. They have talked to this, their group many times. They're extremely eager. So, you normally, you know, they always say 30, 60. You know, I always add a few more days onto that because we always encounter problems of some type and something they don't encounter or think of. So, I'm thinking about probably less than 90 days. This is, for the accounting part of it, the financial part, will be up and running. Now, after that, we'll probably have to figure out how long it's going to take to get permits and things like that and whatever, I'm not sure what it's going to take to get that up and running.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Bill, if it does what you say it's going to do, it looks like a super program.
Well, and I hope so. And this is, again, this is what City of Fort Lauderdale has done for their residents. And this is the dashboard. And these are all the things that they already have pre-planned or pre-programmed for them. So, if someone wants to come in and look at the city's revenues and expenditures, that's what this does for the last couple of years. And then the grade or the lined-out part is the budget. And again, I just want to show you one, you know, if you look at it, you can just see what the increase or decrease over the previous year was. If you want to know what kind of revenue types there are, you just click on it. And then it actually, you can see on the right, on the side, it breaks it down into the different revenue categories. And then if there's even additional information available, you click on it again and it even provides you with another layer of detail. So, this is the type of information, mostly revenues and expenditures. There's some things on here that will show that will provide detailed transactions. So, it's, like I said, it's a very powerful tool. It's probably going to take a little bit of time to get this dashboard set up just like this, but once we get the data linked, I think you'll, you'll see there's going to be a lot of very useful and good information that will be readily available to, knowing yourself, with the citizens and to all various department, department heads.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a quick question. It says on here that there's an annual recurring rate of 13,325. Is that just for the first three years? Does it go away after that?
No, it's the first three years. So, they set it for 13, 9, 25. After, after the third year, then we have to negotiate. And what it's typically based on is the size of the budget. So, this one was based on a budget, our size right now. And three years from now, if the budget goes up, then the cost might go up a little bit. If our budget goes down, then they'll probably lower the cost. But, it's all based on how big your budget is, is what the cost is based on.
Unfortunately, if you follow software trends, that's what they're all doing now. You can't outright buy software anymore. You have to buy a subscription. So, I notice it's a similar concept to what everybody else is doing. It's a way for them to keep extracting their...
That's because they're good business people. Come on.
Okay, any other comments? Anything else, Bill?
Yes, with your approval, I would like to put it on next week's agenda as consent also.
Anyone approve? Anyone disapprove?
I just, so I noticed on here that there's a, a fee would be waived if we had this.
Right, that's why we're kind of on the deadline and he's been calling me on a semi-daily basis, I guess, to find out because there's a $4,900 implementation fee that they're waiving if we get the agreement signed by the end of September.
And is that 40, well, it's for now, but let's say in three years, we're going to have to revisit all this. Do we have to, do we have to worry about this anymore? Okay.
Well, only the annual subscription fee or whatever you want to call this type of fee.
I see.
That would, that would then continue going forward. If we felt that there was a need to continue utilizing this, then we would have to negotiate with them a new fee. If we went with someone entirely different, then we'd have to start over and then it would probably be an implementation charge.
I see.
But this one, there's only a one-time need to get everything on the system up and running, and then we go from there.
Good. Other questions? Anyone? I think they've already expressed that they approve of you sending it back to us, Bill.
Yep, next week.
I hope it's as good as you say it is.
Me too, me too. You know, salesmen, they say it's wonderful. So, you know, if you can always rely on a salesman, then, then we're good to go.
You had me with transparency.
That too. I mean, he did. I got to say that he gave me some online, other online presentations of cities. And the information that other cities provide their residents and citizens is amazing. It was just, this is just, this is a small group. It was very impressive of what, how they have it set up and what they provide their citizens. So I'm hoping with some time that we can do that same thing here.
Any other questions, comments, anything else, Bill?
No, thank, nope.
No more comments? I think we have one more item to discuss, and that's adjourned. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.